I'd say you were mayor three times.
Yeah, actually I was. Okay, let's start the afternoon study session. Madam Clerk.
The record will reflect that Council Mayor Protem Webb and Mayor Heffernan are absent excused for the moment.
Okay.
No, the other half.
Are there any clarifications? I don't know how you can have a clarification when you don't have a report.
I think we rule of order here. Is there such thing as excuse for the moment?
Okay, so are there any clarifications of any items on the consent calendar? Seeing none, we'll move forward. Madam Clerk, we don't have any reports.
Item two, RDA formation, authority, and Santa Ana Heights project funding.
The City Council, a portion of Sphers issues being discussed with the county is the annexation of West Santa Ana Heights and at the same time taking over the redevelopment agency that was begun by the county in 1985.
Mr. or Madam City Council, since I have a conflict of interest in West Santa Ana Heights, can I sit in on a study session on this item?
We're not specifically addressing West.
Okay, fine, thank you. I'll sit here.
I'm telling that to Robbins, the Robbins premise.
Okay.
I thought that a study session-
Not my legal advice.
Okay.
And no decision is being requested. I thought that it would be good for a study session item regarding what redevelopment is, since the city does not have its own redevelopment agency and we will be contemplating forming our own redevelopment agency, what that is all about, what the legal framework for forming redevelopment agencies and redevelopment areas are. So we are going to begin that education process today. And John Gads from Stradling Yonka is here, who's going to walk us through a PowerPoint presentation. And a part of this presentation then is we're going to talk about some specific projects in Santa Ana Heights redevelopment project area. John?
Okay, thank you, members. Today, we're just going to talk kind of generally about redevelopment and then I'll transition into Dave Kiff, who'll be talking more about the specifics of the Santa Ana Heights project that you'll actually be looking at. So the first step in redevelopment is actually establishing the redevelopment agency. And you'll find it's actually a very easy process. You basically just need to adopt the ordinance which establishes the agency, doesn't require any kind of state or other approvals, it's just something that you do on your own and then send the information to the state. One of your first decisions would be, who is the governing board of the redevelopment agency? The redevelopment law specifically allows the city council to be the members of the board. I would guess within the state, and there's approximately 400 redevelopment agencies, probably all but a handful in maybe the bigger cities have the members of the city council as the governing board of the agency. But you can select a different board if you like.
Quick question.
Yes.
Would we have to make separate public filings if we were members of both boards?
Well, yes, you do, but it's essentially the same standards apply.
Thank you. It's just the front page.
Yeah. Important to know that the agency is a separate public agency, a separate entity, it's not just a department of the city. And that's important to know because the debts and agreements that you'll enter into as a redevelopment agency are not obligations of the city, they're obligations of the redevelopment agency. And I think the state set that up originally so that tax increment financing, the bond financing that redevelopment agencies are able to undertake could be done just by the redevelopment agency without the city getting involved in that, without city general funds being at issue, and also not implicating some of the debt limitations that apply to cities.
John, who backs those then? Is it just a revenue source from the tax increment?
Generally, yes. And matter of fact, in the Santa Ana Heights, there are existing tax allocation bonds and the only revenues that I know that are pledged for that are the tax allocation revenues from the redevelopment project itself. Those are generally done in a fairly conservative way. So there's a conservative estimate of the future taxes that'll be raised. If you generate a lot of redevelopment and development activity within your redevelopment project, you'll actually generate a lot more taxes. But for purposes of issuing bonds, you'll generally want to just estimate a very small increase per year, generally 2% or some small increase in taxes, and that'll get you your bonds.
Is there a liability then on the redevelopment agency ads that they, in other words, they're accepting the liability as a group?
There's certain liability that goes along with issuing debt, particularly in the disclosure that's made on these bond issues. In the case of the Santa Ana Heights project, there's existing debt out there already. And the first priority in any tax increment that's generated from the site would be to pay off the existing debt. And I don't believe that would implicate the city redevelopment agency if one is formed because those bonds were issued by the county. But yes, I suppose there is some liability just as office holders.
Well, can you describe that liability? You can't open that door and then move on.
I know, that's a little scary, isn't it? But you know, if you have issued bonds in the past, you will have seen the disclosure documents, generally the official statement that goes along with those bonds describes, basically describes the conditions of the city and what the money will be used to pay for. And the idea of that disclosure is to disclose anything that a bondholder might find relevant in deciding whether to purchase those bonds. And as office holders, you are charged with knowing what is in that document, going through that, and basically signing off on its truth, to the best of your knowledge.
John, wouldn't there be other liabilities, just like a city council, if a decision is made, you know, not based upon fact and, you know, the same type of, I don't know how to describe it, but subject to the same kind of legal ramifications as a council?
Well, I guess a simple question, is it like liable, is truth a defense?
And it's in the disclosure, it's just, it's the best of your knowledge, really.
Okay.
So yes. And then as the city manager was saying, really, the general liability is the same, pretty much the same as your liability that you would have as members of the city council for the actions that you take. Generally, as members, you know, you're not personally liable for the actions of the city. Same would be true with the redevelopment agency.
Okay.
Okay, now I'll turn to adopting the redevelopment project itself. And I'm concentrating on the actions that you would be taking if you decide to go through this, assuming that you would be adopting the existing Santa Ana Heights redevelopment project as opposed to a brand-new redevelopment project. First thing you do is just adopt an ordinance which just adopts the existing redevelopment plan. That redevelopment plan was adopted by the County of Orange Board of Supervisors in 1986, I believe. And so you'd essentially be, just be ratifying what is already out there. The more important part, the more difficult part of the process, is that the city and the county would need to enter into an agreement that would deal with how this transition occurs. And that's a process that's been ongoing for quite some time, I understand.
I have a question on the first one.
Yes.
It says, "City Council adopts ordinance adopting the existing redevelopment plan covering annexed territory, but we're a redevelopment agency that covers the entire city of Newport Beach with a plan for that specific geographic area."
That's right. And this particular project area encompasses, and Dave will get into it later, exactly what it is, but it is just a limited area within the city, primarily in the Santa Ana Heights area, as well as county territory, particularly the John Wayne Airport area. So it would not cover the entire city by any means.
Would that ordinance be exempt from SEQA?
Normally, when a redevelopment plan is adopted, there is a SEQA, there is a SEQA action taken. Here, because you're not, you know, you're not really adopting anything new, all you're doing is ratifying what's already out there, you're probably not going to do an environmental impact report or anything like that. It'd probably be something simpler, perhaps an exemption, perhaps a native declaration. I don't know if we've determined what the SEQA determination would be, but I don't believe it would be anything really extensive. So this agreement is the key to the process. And what the redevelopment law says is that the city and county should allocate the tax increment to each party in proportion to the cost to each of implementing the redevelopment project. And so you have to determine, you know, what needs to be done to implement the redevelopment project. In an area like this, you've got a portion that would remain in the county, the John Wayne Airport area, as well as the portion that would be in the city. And so you need to determine kind of what the redevelopment project is and what costs are going to be incurred by the county and what costs are going to be incurred by the city redevelopment agency. The law does say, though, that the first priority for tax increment has to be for repayment of existing debt. And again, there is existing tax allocation bonds out there who would take first call on the revenues. But it's important to note that both the city and the county can still carry out the redevelopment plan and have some role. This agreement will really lay out kind of the constitution as to how that is to happen. And then I just wanted to mention a little bit on the project area committee. I know there's an existing project area committee formed for this area. In the redevelopment law itself, these committees, which are formed by residents and business owners and organizations existing within the redevelopment project, are required to be formed and to give advice to the redevelopment agency board, particularly for the adoption of the redevelopment plan. And then they're required to remain in place and give advice for three years after the adoption of the redevelopment plan. After that, it's really up to the redevelopment agency board whether they should remain in place or not. Some cities also, in place of the project area committee, which is a statutory creation, have established redevelopment commissions or other citizens advisory commissions that can perform much the same function.
So before you pass on that, so we would, even if we adopted the existing plan that's been in place for years, we would still have to reform this project area committee?
You know, it's not really clear if you are, you would be technically adopting the redevelopment plan. The general law is that these are only, these are created in connection with the original adoption of the plan. Not exactly sure if they'd be required to be, to remain in place if you're just adopting an existing plan. But in any case, it is at least at your option to keep them in place.
Under this scenario, does the, is the redevelopment plan jointly administered? Or does the city administer the portion in its territory and the county administers the portion in its territory?
That'll be governed by the agreement that you work out with the county. I haven't been involved in that process, but I believe that the intent is that there would be, that the county would remain involved in implementing a portion involving the airport.
I think the discussion so far would be that the county really would not be very involved unless we ask them to be involved, that the city would take over the redevelopment agency and that we would manage the funds, there would be a call on funds going to bankruptcy debt and existing debt, and that it would be left to the city and with the recommendations of the PAC to take on and implement the projects that would fulfill the redevelopment plan.
So we would be taking on the responsibility of those projects that may be in the county, then?
Yes.
Okay.
But the John Wayne Airport is in the county and the plan says that no tax increment will be spent on John Wayne Airport.
Okay.
So it would be spent in the city if we annexed West Santa Ana Heights.
And only the airport is, will be the remaining county portion?
Yes, there's that little, you know, strip, this side of Bristol.
Of 30 acres?
That's right.
And that's all of it?
Yes, thank you.
Didn't they say there was a housing element in here that the county would administer countywide, though? And that's been undefined, has it not?
That's true. That is something that we're talking about, is that the 20% set aside, and I imagine that's going to be something that's going to be talked about in this presentation, that the county would administer that. So that is a good point.
So that's a 20% of the total intake funds?
Tax increment each year.
Okay, and that's on top of the other bonds that are going out?
Correct.
The redevelopment law limits redevelopment plans in a number of different ways. There's a time limit for the effectiveness of the redevelopment plan for undertaking any kind of activities. That is 40 years from the date of the plan adoption for the Santa Ana Heights project that would, which was adopted in 1986. That would take the plan out to the year 2026. The agency can receive tax increment for another 10 years. And basically, that's to, that's allow you to issue the bonds to pay for the project activities. That'll go on beyond the effectiveness of the plan. And basically, the last 10 years of the redevelopment project will essentially just be on kind of an autopilot, paying off the debt. 50 years for Santa Ana Heights would take it out to 2036. There may be some small, some one or two-year extensions that have been allowed by recent legislation, but that's close to where we're in. The redevelopment law allows a redevelopment agency to adopt, to permit itself to undertake eminent domain to acquire property. And 12 years is the maximum time that that can occur. As I understand it, there is no eminent domain allowed in this plan. It would require a fairly extensive amendment of the redevelopment plan to get that power of eminent domain. So the taking over the redevelopment plan itself would not by itself give the agency the power of eminent domain.
John, technical question. If the city council, acting as a council and not as a redevelopment agency, wanted to condemn or exercise its right of eminent domain, can they do that, one? And then, two, can they qualify that project for tax increment financing?
The big difference between the powers of a city to undertake, to take land by eminent domain and a redevelopment agency is that redevelopment agencies are able to acquire land by eminent domain in redevelopment project areas which have been declared to be blighted. And for about 50 years, the Supreme Court has allowed that to occur as the public purpose for which the eminent domain is undertaken. Probably all of you, you know, are familiar with the recent case over the summer, the Kelo case, where the, where the city of New London, Connecticut acquired property, residential property by eminent domain for somewhat different purpose, just for economic development. It hadn't found the property to be blighted. And the California redevelopment law does not allow that to occur. So there are additional limits in California law that would prevent that kind of thing from happening, just acquiring, and the city could not acquire probably residential property just for economic development purposes.
Well, you didn't answer my question, so let me answer it for you. We can take it for public purposes.
Correct.
The city can take it for public purposes and then put it in the redevelopment agency.
It's still, and when you say put it in the redevelopment agency, you mean maybe property within the redevelopment project?
Well, I guess if we use our right of eminent domain for public purposes, then we can also finance it with the tax increment.
Right, that could happen, sure.
Okay. That was your question.
I'm just, I was just making the point that there are maybe more limits on the city's ability to undertake eminent domain than a redevelopment agency.
I have a question.
But you would not have to, you would not have to adopt eminent domain for your redevelopment agency in order to do what you're suggesting.
Okay, and the 12-year limitation is because basically you can, you can exercise your right of eminent domain for almost any reason?
Right, once, if it's in the redevelopment project, yeah.
This eminent domain that we're talking about here, of the county, was for redevelopment purposes and also for bringing in housing. We are talking about things that are getting far away from that. How far away can you get and still classify it within the definition of the original redevelopment agency's use?
Councilman, the redevelopment plan that was adopted by the county does not have the provision, does not give the authority for the redevelopment agency to exercise eminent domain.
Right, at all, at this point.
No.
But our spending limits are also within the boundaries of what it was set up for. And that specifically spoke of paying off the bonds that partially was set up for the airport use, and thirdly, this housing use or developing. And we're, I'm just wondering, how far are we getting away from that on some of the things that we're presently talking about spending?
Well, I think you're mixing a couple of things because the county's bankruptcy really had nothing to do when the redevelopment agency was formed in 1985, and there isn't anything in the redevelopment plan that talks about bankruptcy. That was something that came after because the county went to bankruptcy court, and that was a layer that was put on redevelopment agencies in order to try and fund the bond debt. How far are we getting away from what the agency was set up? I think what we're trying to do is get back to the reasons the agency was set up, and that is to do physical improvements in the Santa Ana Heights area. Not many improvements have taken place since the redevelopment agency was formed in 1985. And I think now we would like to take over that agency and complete projects that have been on the list to do for a long period of time.
And actually, let's turn to the next slide, and we'll start talking about some of the powers that you would have with the funds that come along with taking over the redevelopment agency. Public improvements would certainly be at the top of your list of the things that you'd want to do with a redevelopment agency and with the tax increment funds and bond funds that you're able to obtain. A redevelopment agency can pay for public improvements, both the land and the construction and the improvements themselves. The improvements do not have to be in your redevelopment project. They could be outside your redevelopment project, but it would be necessary that they are at least of benefit to your redevelopment project. And that does occur when you have certain public improvements that serve your redevelopment project area.
What would be examples of that? What would be examples of that?
You know, it could be something like, say, a library that serves the larger area, other, you know.
Street widening, maybe outside of the redevelopment agency.
Right, right. And street widening that's close to the area but not in the area, you know, might be a benefit. At the end of the list, you see there are a few prohibitions. City Hall is the number-one prohibition that the legislature placed on redevelopment agencies. A number of cities were using redevelopment agency funds to build city halls in the 80s and 90s, and legislature thought that was bad for some reason. And you should note, too, that this is basically a, just like all of redevelopment, it tends to be more of a bricks-and-mortar type program. It's not a, it's not a program that pays for services, and hence, you're not allowed to use your redevelopment funds to pay for normal maintenance and operations. Generally, the public improvements will be owned by the city or other city agencies as opposed to the redevelopment agency. In order to spend the funds in these ways, it's necessary to make a number of findings. The city council actually makes those findings, that the improvements are provided for in the redevelopment plan. You have an implementation plan that you adopt every five years. It's kind of a planning document that says what you want to do with your redevelopment project. Needs to be included in that. Must be a benefit to the project. Importantly, must be no other reasonable means of financing the improvements. And the idea there is that this is kind of a last resort fund for these things. The way most cities have been over the last years, there tend not to be a lot of other funds available for these things. And finally, that it's alleviating blight or providing affordable housing. So those are the findings you need to make as you approve that. Let's turn to the next one. Assistance to private development projects is another one of the real powerful things that redevelopment agencies can do. Often tends to be controversial, but often can really help economic development within a city. The agency can purchase land, and if the plan allows, through eminent domain. Site assembly, coming up with a large enough development site for the type of development that you want, another important power of the redevelopment agency. Then the agency can turn around and sell that land for development. You can choose your own developer. Most redevelopment agencies will go through some kind of process or request for proposals or requests for qualifications of developers and kind of do a beauty contest and ask for submissions to find out really what the private sector wants to do, what the best developers would like to do with this kind of property. The agency can sell the land to the developer that it chooses, and that's a power that's kind of unique for, within the public agencies in the state. Most public agencies have to basically sell to the highest bidder. But redevelopment agencies, it's acknowledged, are out there trying to do something different, not just maximizing the sales price of land, but trying to get the sort of development that the agency believes will be best in turning around a blighted area. The agency can, has certain other powers, can make certain kinds of loans, commercial rehabilitation loans, provide assistance for industrial manufacturing uses. And some of the main restrictions that the legislature has placed on redevelopment agencies have involved assistance for big-box users, for Coscos and large retailers like that, as well as auto dealers. And many agencies have participated in those deals, both to alleviate blight within the area as well as to generate sales tax and economic development within the area. So there are, there are a number of restrictions that apply when an agency wants to do that kind of deal.
Is the restrictions on those types of retailers, or is the restriction on using money to then generate sales tax?
Restrictions on the agency as opposed to the retailer, and whether the agency can sell land at below market value or provide any other kind of assistance.
Okay, but that's not my question. Is there assistance on, I mean, is the restriction on the type of retailer or is it on the agency cannot have uses that then in turn will generate sales tax?
It does focus on sales tax generating uses. And the agency is allowed to assist retailers that are developing on previously developed land. The idea that, that's true redevelopment, when the retailer is taking on blighted property that's been improperly developed. But the real restriction is on kind of open land. And I don't, I don't believe you really have any land like that within the project that would, that would really be subject to that kind of restriction.
To clarify that, if you have, open land does not define itself as blight for a big-box user. So you have to actually physically destroy a building to qualify a retailer. But if it's just plain old open space and it was, the, this was being abused by numerous cities, Corona clearly abused it, took all their vacant-
cities, Corona clearly abused it, took all their vacant land, wrote it down and gave it to the, to the users. So this was the legislature's attempt to close that loophole.
That's correct. That's correct. This is exactly it.
But is that right, that vacant land, it can't be considered blighted?
Well, vacant land can be, you know, can be within a redevelopment project for other reasons, but, but you, whether it's blighted or not, those restrictions on assistance for retail development would, would still exist. Important to note also, there's special status in redevelopment given to owners, which would be owners of both residential and, and commercial property. They must be given an opportunity to participate in the project. And when a redevelopment project is adopted, the redevelopment agency adopts a, a set of owner participation rules that must be followed before you, you know, acquire property from those owners. They need to be, notice needs to be given to them, and they need to be given an opportunity to submit proposals to you before you go forward with outside developers on that property. And finally, affordable housing, which, which we started talking about a bit. Basic requirement is 20% of the tax increment must go into a low and moderate income housing fund, can only be spent for affordable housing purposes. But the, the law is really pretty broad as to what types of uses can be made of those funds. It's, it's not just new construction of affordable housing, but it's also rehabilitation of existing housing. Many, many agencies do mortgage assistance programs, first-time homebuyer loan programs to help, you know, young families get into homes. And there's a variety of types of programs that, that an agency can undertake, even in a, a built-out, developed area such as the Santa Ana Heights area. The funds can be used for both apartments as well as ownership housing. So again, there's a variety of things that you can do, and it may seem daunting to think of the, the amount of money that has to be spent for this, but there will be two, two things going on. First, the agreement between the, the city and the county will, will determine how much of that money actually is going to the, to the city redevelopment agency. And secondly, you know, you'd be looking at, at the variety of types of programs that, to make it fit your, your project area.
I'm confused. So you're saying that, that 20% of the tax increment income, let's say you get $10 million a year, so $2 million a year has to go to affordable housing?
That's right.
Homer, what kind of affordable housing has the county been participating in the last 20 years?
I don't know. You can use that housing all over the county. The county could, not just in redevelopment areas.
Okay, so the county can take money out of the Santa Ana Heights redevelopment area?
For housing.
And build housing up in Placentia.
County land.
That's right. The county has a special redevelopment system that, they actually combine all of their project areas for housing purposes into one agency itself. So they, they, under the law, they're able to spend those housing funds in any one of the project areas. So yes, you can generate housing money increment for the low-mod fund from Lake Forest, and they can spend it up in Placentia.
Well, but, but now... How would that apply to us, though? If we put ours?
If we take it over, what, what would happen to the money that's been going to the county?
We need to research that further because as I understand it, they treat the Santa Ana Heights agency separately, and that money accrues and can only be spent in that agency, but Homer may know differently. But it, it is treated differently from the rest of what's called NDAP. They have, they have 13 project areas combined together, and one project area set aside. The Santa Ana Heights is the one that's set aside. So then my understanding, they need to spend the low and mod funds for Santa Ana Heights in and around Santa Ana Heights.
No, they don't, because the affordable housing money doesn't need to be spent in the project area. And in addition, several years ago, the county had some special state legislation which allowed them to spend their housing funds in any city within the county, not just the communities where there is a redevelopment area.
But if we take that over, will that apply to us?
Well, it depends upon what kind of agreement we enter into with the county. Right now, the talks are that the county would like to have that 20% set-aside housing fund to spend anywhere in the county.
But would that include the 20% of our housing? In other words, we're proposing housing in that area. Do we have a 15% limit above the 20% that's already there, or is that part of it?
That, that is it. That is the 20%. That would be, it, it's the money that has to be spent for low and moderate income housing.
But this thing particularly says in that area.
Well, I don't think it's clear, but do we get credit for that housing on, off of our, you know? So county gets credit for it?
Well, now, if we took over the redevelopment agency, are you saying, you're saying that, that the county would still continue to draw the affordable housing monies off to where we couldn't get credit for it?
I'm saying that that is subject to negotiation as far as the agreement, and the county has let us know that they would like to have that 20% set aside for use elsewhere in the county.
But how about when we build a new building there, we have a 15% requirement for affordable housing within that project some way? Now, are we required, that's over and above what that's already talked about that the county is taking off, right? Because we're a different entity than the county. In other words, we're now the run, that's not part of the, or is that part of the negotiation?
That, I don't think that's a requirement on the city, because it wouldn't be the city who would be developing housing. If there were a private housing development occurring in the redevelopment project area, 15% of the units would have to be affordable. But I don't think that that would have an impact on Newport Beach annexing and taking on this agency, because our housing element has a requirement of 20%, so this is lower than what we already would require.
But that would be over and above what the 20% of the redevelopment funds that are gone.
But the 20, the housing set-aside that's in that 20% could be used to subsidize those 15% units.
Not unless we have say on that. We've given it to the county.
But we could ask the county, because they subsidize projects throughout the county, so we could apply for that assistance, or the developer could.
I think on the surface, you know, it may seem, wow, this is great, we could potentially get 20% of this fund for affordable housing. But what it really means is that you're taking on an obligation of which we may or may not have the initiative, the capacity, and the land to fulfill.
And it is important that, that to the extent you take on that money, that it be spent expeditiously. There's a, there's a concept in redevelopment law known as excess surplus, and basically that means that you need to, you can't have more than a four-years accumulation of the housing funds that has gone unspent or unencumbered. You need to be spending those monies fairly regularly if, if you're going to take on that responsibility. So as the city manager said, that, that would be an important discussion within the negotiations on the county-city agreement.
Are there any regulations governing the spending of redevelopment money? I mean, can an agency just allow it to continue to stockpile?
Or the housing money?
No, just other, other increment.
Yeah, that, there, there aren't restrictions on, on the, the rest of the money. It can, it can stockpile for basically as long as you want. It is necessary, though, to continue to receive tax increment, that you have a debt. You'll actually only receive tax increment to the extent that, that you've incurred the debt, and you need that money to pay the debt. That debt can be both the bonds that are issued, as well as just other agreements. You know, if you enter in an agreement with a developer to provide them land, and you need money to acquire the land, then, then that would be another, another source of debt.
Let me, are you saying generally, tax increment, we don't get it unless we're incurring debt to spend it?
That's correct.
For any project?
Exactly.
I have a question there. This redevelopment area is now in Newport Beach. It would be under the Newport Beach tax rate, right? I mean, particularly if we annex Santa Ana Heights east of west. Let's just set up a hypothetical for a moment. So that tax rate then goes into this redevelopment agency if they're in the redevelopment area. It's not usable to us, except as redevelopment funds. Now we're talking about the use of that money. So we have to replace the actual use that, that these people need. I mean, their schools and roads and that type of thing are ours to a, to a large degree to the fund. And the redevelopment funds, what we're getting is what's left after the county gets 20% on housing, and $3 million or something like that, which is 20% more for paying the bankruptcy bonds?
I think there's some slides here that talk about how the money is generated and where it goes. First of all, for the county, though, to form a redevelopment agency in '85 or '86, they had to enter into agreements with all of the taxing agencies that were receiving property tax in that area. So the schools and special districts or anything like that, there are agreements known as pass-through agreements, for the most part, that are taking place. But rather than muddy the water, I'll turn it over to John.
Okay. And what this slide shows is, is trying to illustrate the, the tax increment concept a little bit. What happens in redevelopment is when the redevelopment plan is adopted initially, and that was in 1986, there's, what's called a base year is created. And basically, it means that the, the existing property tax at that time, at the time the plan is adopted, is basically frozen within, say, say, you know, here, say, $100,000 is generated in tax, in property taxes that year. Well, the schools will get a share, and the city will get a share, and the county will get a share, and, and other, other taxing agencies will get a share. As the redevelopment project goes on, that, those shares will remain exactly the same. They'll go, they'll be distributed the same proportions as, as they were in 1986. What redevelopment tax increment is, is the increase. It's that red and yellow part, the additional taxes that are generated after the time of the plan adoption. And under the Proposition 13 property tax system, property taxes are only reassessed to the current market value when there's a sale of the property, or when there's development of the property. The new development is, is assessed at the market value. So the idea of redevelopment is to stimulate sales and particularly development of property. And then as that sale and development occurs, the, there's increased property taxes, and that is generated, and that, that's the money that you have in tax increment to help pay for your redevelopment project. Now, as the city manager mentioned, while, while the initial, in my example, $100,000 keeps getting distributed to the county and the schools and the other taxing agencies the same as it was in 1986, they do get an additional share by law or by agreement of the increase in the value. And I think in Santa Ana Heights, that certain of that money, of the increase in taxes goes to the, I believe, the Santa Ana Unified School District. There are a couple county agencies that get maybe, I don't know, flood control and libraries, I'm not sure. And, and there are, there are other taxing agencies that continue to get a piece of that, that increase over time. So that doesn't all go to the, to the redevelopment agency.
But an important point here is that people aren't paying any more property taxes if they are in a redevelopment agency than they would be outside a redevelopment agency. It's just after the agency is formed, the growth in property taxes through the resale and economic stimulation caused by the redevelopment agency is captured and used by the redevelopment agency to be plowed back into the area in order to create more property tax increment that will be used by the agency.
Can you describe how school districts get funded from redevelopment agency money?
In this particular project, I, I believe the, the redevelopment agency ends up paying the, the Santa Ana School District and perhaps other school districts as well. A portion of the growth, under the law that was in effect at the time this, this plan was adopted, the school districts were required to ask for their, you know, a share of the money. Some of them did, some of them didn't, but, but there's been some litigation over, over that, basically saying that the redevelopment agency has to pay them a piece of that. Now, school districts are funded in a, kind of a different way, because they get, they get backfilled from the state. So they get a certain amount of money each year, basically regardless of their local property taxes. What happens in redevelopment is that the, a certain proportion, around half of the money that comes from the redevelopment agency is viewed in a different way by the state. It's viewed as money that's there for capital improvements and, and things like that. And it does, and, and that part does not reduce the state funding. So school districts generally like redevelopment, because it ends up giving them a little bit more money each year for capital improvements and, and, and other things, and not cutting into their state funding in a dollar-for-dollar amount of what they get from the agency. Kind of complicated, but, but it, it does tend to work to their benefit. Right, and that's why the, the state has been, been very tough on redevelopment programs in general, because they view redevelopment as a tax loss to the, to the state, because they have to then backfill the, at least the school districts.
I have a quick question. If, let's say we get 10 years down the road, and you said that the, the, I think 2021 was the end of the project in 2031?
2026, I think.
2026?
2036, I think, yeah.
Let's say, I don't know, 2015, we decide we've done all the projects we want to do in that area. We can terminate the redevelopment agency at that time if we so choose.
You can, and at that point, the, the key focus would be on the existing debt, and making sure that the debt is still repaid. But yes, you could, you could determine to just shut it down.
Okay. And then the, the monies that was accruing to the redevelopment agency would now be general fund-type money?
Then that, that money would, would go back to the, the normal allocation of taxes, which, which would go to all the different taxing agencies.
Taxing agencies, right.
City, county, school district, others.
But there would be a much bigger pot there to split up.
Right. That's right.
How would you pay that, the existing debt? In other words, there was a 10-year moratorium or something you were talking about to make sure that debt gets paid, right?
Right. And, and anything you did in terms of shutting down the redevelopment agency would need to ensure that, that the first call on that money was, was to pay off the debt.
So there is sort of a hanging on there that ensures the debt is paid first.
Correct.
I think the way you could do that is basically say if your debt is $2 million a year, but the agency is receiving $4 million a year after all of the other pass-throughs and, and county bankruptcy, that you can say that the agency isn't going to incur any more debt. So anything above the $2 million then is going to be shared with the taxing agencies and the percentage in which they were getting prior to the redevelopment agency being formed.
So you're basically saying that any additional growth would go into regular taxes, but the growth up to the point that you had at, at ending the agency would continue to go to the agency at least to pay off the bonds that are...
I think that's, that's one way you can do it.
I think that's, that's right. And, and that's something, you know, you could determine at the time. But it would be important that, however you did it, that the, the debt was paid, and then after that point, there probably... that point, there are probably different things you could do to redistribute the taxes.
Does anybody know how far the existing debt goes out now? Dave, or?
I don't know. They refinance some debt. Of course, another thing you can do if you have a stockpile of money is just pay off that debt if the bonds, you know, have that kind of provision in them, and then you can disband the agency and all, yeah, call the bonds.
You don't have to answer tonight, but can you find that out? How long that debt goes out?
Homer, let me interject here. It's 5:00. Chief Riley, you need an hour? I don't want to pinch you because there'll be, there'll probably be a few questions for you, too. You won't? I won't. So, do you think you need an hour? We have closed session, don't we? Okay, how long does this need to, then how long does this current mayor need to go?
How many more slides do we have, Dave?
About four more.
Can we run through them very quickly? Okay.
Big pictures, you mean? Good.
I just, thank you, John and Mayor and council members. I just want to give you just some graphics about what the specific Santa Ana Heights project area is. It generates more property tax increment than any other agent, area in the county. It's the most prolific one. It's more than 1,000 acres. You can see where it starts, way up there at the, on the other side of the 405, goes all the way down, includes East Santa Ana Heights, West Santa Ana Heights, all of John Wayne, and also goes all the way down, snakes around the corner of the bay there.
Can you give us some streets, okay, Dave, on the west side?
Sure. This is Irvine there, as my pointer's dying. Irvine Ave. right there. Don, do you have your pointer? There we go. You can give me Irvine Avenue. That's Irvine Avenue.
Here in this, is that?
Yeah. That's Mesa. Yeah, that's Santa Ana roughly, and that's Bristol area. So, and then all of John Wayne up there.
That's just the boundaries of the airport, right?
Right.
Where's our new fire station?
New fire station is?
There we go.
Yeah, actually a little closer than that, yeah. Okay, so, and again, it does include the Upper Newport Bay Park in there. This is a picture that we wanted to try to paint for the county, and you got a copy of this letter, in that today Newport Beach consists, is getting close to half of the assessed value of that project area. So, these are areas in town today that are generating property tax that goes to the county's redevelopment project area, which to me is a good reason that the city council may want to consider getting more control over this because it's more than $8 million a year there. John Wayne produces 49%. These are some of the projects that are pending. This is a list that the PAC has worked up, and these are 2005 estimates, and it paints a picture here of, if you follow me up to the funds available in July of 2006, you'll see $25.3 million. You'll see a project list, which includes a $17.5 million community center, the full fire station costs, the undergrounding of Cypress and Mesa area, and all coming up to roughly $33 million. So, that's a deficit of $8 million between what's in the bank today and the projects that the PAC and the community are interested in seeing. However, over the next 10 years, at a conservative estimate of the increment added, and this is net of the debt expense, the low mod deposit, and even a county administrative expense, that that agency will generate $20.6 million over the next 10 years. So, that would wipe out that deficit, so it is able to accomplish all these projects and potentially another 12 million more. Any questions about this slide? Okay, a couple of designs of some of the projects. You've seen the park. This is the, to our, to the right is the Mesa Drive, Mesa Birch Park. Those are in its final designs. We hope to break ground fairly quickly on that. And on the left-hand side is the proposed horse arena project. That will be three different arenas in the Santa Ana Delhi Channel, which is right next to the Booth Center, this side of Mesa. And with that, I kind of wanted to wrap up and-
What are they going to do with the horse poop, Dave?
It's all going to be very well-water quality engineered, actually. Yeah, we've been working with them on that. And then, to wrap up, there's some issues for the council that, questions that you'll want to address over time. Should the city take steps to form the agency and transfer the project area? Of course, what role should PAC have? PAC is, the term PAC you'll hear, Project Area Committee. This is actually a project advisory committee. The Board of Supervisors changed that title, so they are advisory-only today. I think they're a pretty important part of our community outreach to them. And then, I think just generally, the council should be aware, as you know, when cities form redevelopment agencies, there's some concern about, well, what neighborhoods are you looking at? And where, if you, if you wanted to consider some type of limitation to this just in Santa Ana Heights.
As part of our founding resolution, can you play some assuring action that it is limited without a vote of the people to Santa Ana Heights?
Might be a good question for John to answer.
I mean, I suppose you can certainly make that part of, part of your, you know, initial Uncertain whether, you know, you could change your mind later in the future, but certainly that could be expressed at least as your intent.
Okay. Because part of the concern, I think Dave expressed it, people would say, well, there may be pockets of blight here and there, you know, people could get apprehensive about that.
Right, and that would be appropriate for that time of adopting both the agency and the initial plan.
Thank you.
That actually concludes my presentation. Just for the folks at home, if they wanted to learn more about that, we'll leave that up on the screen.
Is that it? Any other council comments? So, just thanks. Thank you, John. Public comment? Is this next, city clerk? Public comment? Oh, excuse me, Mr. Nichols.
Just one question. Sometime, I'd like to get a number of what, if this were just land that were in the city and paying taxes that we would use to pay for these costs versus being in the Santa Ana Heights redevelopment on, how much do we lose that we would have otherwise had to spend on that area?
Well, if you look at this slide again here, you can see that $8 million is being generated in property tax that, from our community and going to the agency. And arguably, if you include it, you would take that $8 million, and you'd take roughly 16, 15 and 1/2 to 16% of that, and that's, that smaller amount, that 15 to 16%, would be what would come to the city's general fund. So, for right now, if redevelopment makes sense where you have a community that has extensive capital project needs, it doesn't make sense so much once those needs are addressed.
So, it's about $1.2 billion based on this, that the city would be getting in property taxes if there wasn't a redevelopment agency, over and above what we're getting now from that area.
You said over and above. Over and above means that we're getting $8 million now.
No, we're- Let me jump back to the slide. We're, this is a crude example again, but-
You mean over that baseline blue?
Yeah, we're in the baseline blue now. So, what we're talking about is if this, if this tower here got reapportioned as a, after redevelopment, after the agency goes away, we would get 17% of this. Or again, as Dennis corrects me, because of ERAF and the triple flip, we're down to about 15 and 1/2%. That's how much of that we'd get. So, it's much less than the agency gets today.
So, of the $4,500,000, we get 15% of it roughly?
That's correct. If you use this model, this was just an illustrative model.
That's close enough.
Okay. Any other? All right? Public comment? Thank you.
Hi, my name's Dolores Otting. Two quick questions. First of all, is there a way, if we get control of this redevelopment agency, that some of the tax dollars can go to the Newport Mesa Unified School District? And secondly, when do you feel that we'll be doing this? Thank you very much.
Homer, you want to respond to those?
We certainly aren't looking at passing through more dollars to the school district because they have been made whole, it's my understanding, based upon the agreements that are in place. And when would we be doing this? I think we would be looking at doing this next year, maybe completing it by July if possible, although, maybe July to January timeframe of '06.
Okay.
Hi, I'm Barbara Van Etten, I'm chairman of the PAC. And I just want to clarify a couple of things. The eminent domain issue, a few years ago, the county polled the neighbors, we actually voted in Santa Ana Heights to do away with eminent domain. I know that that is a very, very important part of our redevelopment agency, and it means a lot to the neighborhood. They did not want eminent domain, and that was, that was adopted by the county. The PAC does an advisory board, and we're also the only voice for our community. And when East Santa Ana Heights was annexed to the city of Newport Beach, the city, Dave and Homer, assured us that the PAC would stay as an advisory board and that eventually, when this situation changed and they took over the agency, that they would administer that. They'd appoint PAC members because right now, we're appointed by the county. We feel in Santa Ana Heights right now that it's a very good thing that the city take over the agency because the county is just totally out of touch on a grassroots basis to what's going on in our neighborhood. We would hope that you would adopt the specific plan as it is today. And it's always been our understanding from the county and from Paul Lanning's office that the money in the redevelopment agency could not be spent outside the redevelopment agency. So, that was something new that I heard today because in all the years that I've been going to meetings at the county and with Paul and PAC meetings, I've never heard that before.
You meant with regard to redevelopment of housing?
Mm-hmm. Now, a few years ago-
That's been there a couple times, I've gotten.
Well, the housing, the Affordable Housing Fund, we know the Affordable Housing Fund is there. We also have at least $2 million in a fund at the airport that was supposed to be for the sound attenuation. That program ended several years ago, and we have been asking the county for at least two to three years as to why that money hasn't been redeposited into our redevelopment agency fund. And we've never gotten a straight answer on that, and it seems to be mystery money that's floating around. I would, but as far as affordable housing goes, I think it was about four or five years ago, maybe a little more, I wasn't actually a PAC member at the time, we did build a project in the west side of Santa Ana Heights for affordable housing. And that's right off of Mesa Drive across from Irvine Ranch Market. And it's our understanding that our 20% goes and is used someplace else in the county because there really isn't anything else in our area, any place to build affordable housing. So, again, the two important things that I think my community are interested in is the eminent domain issue. That's kind of a tricky one, and some assurance that PAC will stay in place. I mean, I can see that you guys would just like to fire me on this. I think as a voice for the community, since we don't have any community associations, PAC's really important. Thanks.
Thank you.
Great job up there, Barbara, and the meetings are drawing record attendance.
Okay, any other public comment? All right, we're going to close that. City clerk?
Item 3, disaster preparedness overview by Chief Riley.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. I'm Tim Riley, Fire Chief, and I'm here to give you a study session presentation on disaster preparedness in Newport Beach. And to take you back a little bit, the next, kind of the generation of this study session item occurred in this council room when we had an interesting exercise dealing with the tsunami watch, warning, or wish, whatever you look at it to be, that created an opportunity for the council to be evacuated from the chambers. And there really was a lot of question about, you know, how the city handled issues of alerting and warning its residents and how we would evacuate people. And so, we really prepared a presentation to talk to you about just the topic of alerting and warning in Newport Beach. However, since that time, the Gulf states of Louisiana, Mississippi, Georgia, and now also Texas, really received a knockout punch in a disaster called Hurricane Katrina, the follow-up of Tropical Storm Rita, and has put disaster preparedness and disaster concerns on the front page of every newspaper, on every single lead-in story for the nightly news, and really right in the face of America about the devastating impacts of a disaster and how do we actually respond to those things. And when I talk to you today, I'll preface my comments by saying that when you look at what happened in New Orleans, for example, which is the most devastating event that's occurred in the history of the United States and for a single event, could that happen in Newport Beach, people want to know? And obviously, as far as scale is concerned, no, we don't have a population of $1.2 million in, 1.2 million people in the Newport Beach area. But if you think about a potentially devastating earthquake the size of the 1906 earthquake in San Francisco, could there be significant damage and destruction and devastation in Newport Beach? Yes, it is possible. Is it probable? Well, nobody can predict that. You know, part of the issue is when you look at those types of issues, what happens in disaster response as it relates to those? And particularly, if you look at what happened in New Orleans, most people will say that the whole response recovery efforts to date have been a miserable failure. And so, I'm here to tell you also that could that happen in Newport Beach? I don't think so. I think our disaster preparedness and disaster response system, while still working in potential of a devastating event, is much better designed and prepared in our region, in our state. I think that our city is as prepared as we can be right now for response. I think there's some issues about what we would do recovery-wise, since we've never dealt with something like that, and what the impacts would be at our organization, on leadership, on responder safety and availability, on communication. We really couldn't tell. But I think that we've taken a look at those issues and are prepared to deal with them. If you think about really what the public expects of us, the public has some high expectations of government, and they really do expect us to be able to protect them. That's what we're here for, is to protect life, property, and the environment. They expect us to be able to alert them in the advance of a disaster, should we have the ability to do so. They expect us to quickly and accurately assess the magnitude of an emergency and keep them informed of what the situation is with complete and up-to-date information. They expect us to be able to safely evacuate people from dangerous areas and relocate them to areas of safe refuge. They expect us to provide rapid restoration of services, and they expect us to give them assistance in the recovery process. And if you look at what happened in New Orleans, I can't say that they did really good in any of those areas. Okay? But I also ask you to take a look at the news coverage coming out of New Orleans as opposed to coming out of Gulfport, Mississippi, for example. While not hit as extremely widespread, Gulfport was also hit equally hard and hurt to Hurricane Katrina, and you don't hear some of the comments coming through the press about the miserable response that occurred in New Orleans that you do in the Gulfport region. And the reason for that is I think that they were prepared, and local government did take on their role and responsibility, and state government reacted appropriately, and that's the system that we operate under today. We talk about the whole issue of local, of response. Who is actually responsible? And there was a lot of mud thrown at FEMA for their slow response. And while I agree that FEMA could, is a great big bureaucracy that needs to really retool based upon some of the lessons we learned, the principal responsibility is the responsibility of local government to protect its citizens and to respond in the area of assessing what's going on, to analyze the situation, to make decisions, what's in the best interest of their public, and to coordinate the response and recovery efforts, as you see that is written down there on this particular slide. And we would be doing that with the assistance of outside agencies if we were in a disaster mode where the disaster overwhelmed our resources. But principally speaking, in most disasters that were managed well, it was local government that initiated command and management of the response and maintained that with outside assistance. When you talk about outside assistance, that's really the role of the other three big players in disaster response, the first being our county, which we call our operational area. And they really are the ones who coordinate outside response coming into our agency and also would coordinate decisions on where resources should go if it was an area-wide disaster. So, if we did have an earthquake of significant magnitude that affected more than just Newport Beach, the operational area would have some significant decisions to make on allocation of resources in the first 24 to 72 hours, and that's what their role is, to really assess and determine whether- assess and determine where the resources need to go. The next step is the state, and really, the state is the coordination effort for master mutual aid throughout, up and down the state, and for intrastate mutual aid agreements, where we would work between other states, to get resources to come in and respond to us. And they're also the organization that would provide declaratory relief for an emergency, and possibly funding, and would also have, be the pass-through for federal assistance, which federal assistance really is in the form of FEMA coming in and providing disaster assistance. But FEMA is not designed to be in the role to come in and take over your emergency, and that's really what local government's all about. So we firmly believe in this type of a system, I think that as we go through this presentation, you'll see that we think it works. And so with that in mind, what we really want to talk to you about, besides just alerting and warning, is just the general city's disaster program, preparedness program, and where we're at. We want to talk to you about the alerting and warning issues that came up as a result of the tsunami warning. We want to talk to you about evacuation of city residents, and how we would go about doing that, talk a little bit specifically about the June 14th episode, and then talk to you a little bit about future options, not only just of alerting and warning, but really where we're going with our current disaster preparedness program. Our disaster preparedness program really took off about 1995, when the council recommitted to funding a full-time disaster preparedness coordinator position. We lost that position in the early 90s, following the ERAF shifts that occurred back then, and so we really didn't have a very strong program. We were able to reinstitute it with a full-time position, and really designed our program around what we called a three-tiered approach to disaster preparedness. And the first approach was to make sure that we, as the fire department, the lead agency, and the lead first responder agency in this community, were well-prepared. And then we wanted to talk about the citywide preparedness, which has to do with other departments and personnel in the city, being prepared to act as disaster service responders, and disaster service workers. And then the third tier is to how we could go about getting the community prepared. In the first tiered approach, the city, the department preparedness, the whole issue of emergency management, and the systems that are now being used in emergency management, and in fact, the newly adopted National Incident Management Plan, adopted by the federal government, was really born in 1997, during a whole slew of huge fires that occurred across Southern California. And the incident command system was born. And the whole concept behind incident command system, is that there's a structure for managing, everything gets compartmentalized, there's clear issues of authority and lines of responsibility, there is a real commitment to the issue of span and control, and it really has to do with everybody knowing what their role is, and how it supports the total at the very top. And if you've participated in any of our EOC drills, you'll see that our EOC is run using the incident command system. All of our chief officers are certified at the highest level in an incident command system. All of our entry-level firefighters are required to have Level 1 and 2 incident command system, all of our captains, Level 1, 2, and 3 of the incident command system. It's something that we've been using, and we have, and we continue to use, on a day-to-day basis, for managing even smaller-scale incidents in Newport Beach. So I believe that our personnel are well-versed in incident management, whether it's a small incident, or a large incident. Also, we recognize the value of understanding and training on mass casualty incidents and mass response. So actually, the internationally-used START triage system, which stands for Simple Triage and Rapid Treatment, is a system that's used internationally for going out and sorting out patients. Triage is a French word, meaning to sort, and that's where you go into a large area to sort out which victims are immediate priority, which are delayed priority, which ones are already dead, which ones are walking wounded that can take care of themselves. And we actually developed that here in Newport Beach, and is now used as the model internationally for simple triage and rapid treatment, and I'm happy to say, it's also now actually being used by the military. So it really has become the standard for managing a large victims. We also developed the multi-casual incident system, that's used in all of this county, and has been adopted in other counties across the country, dealing with what type of an incident command management system you use, when you have more patients than you have responders. And then, of course, we continue to maintain our automatic and mutual aid systems, which are everyday operations, with drops between our borders, between our neighbors. We just recently came back from the Topanga Fire, so we had people up in the Topanga Fire. We certainly had people who were back in the assistance and recovery and response efforts for Hurricane Katrina. So we really are well-versed in mutual aid, automatic aid, large-scale deployment of resources, because we've been involved in them for a long, long time. City preparedness, I'm happy to say that we have a well-adopted emergency management plan. It is considered what's called an all-hazards approach, so the general guideline behind it is that you take the same management philosophies, and apply them to different types of hazards as they are presented to you. We train to that plan throughout the year, including making sure all of our city workers, who aren't even key responders, are trained as disaster services workers. We exercise on the plan annually, we just had our recent Emergency Operations Center exercise last month. We use the standard emergency management system, and now we call it the National Emergency Management System, which is a statewide requirement, the NIMS is now a federal requirement, so we're well-versed in the state and federal required systems. We have an emergency preparedness committee, that has representatives from every single department, that meets on a monthly basis, to talk about improvements to our system. We maintain an emergency operations center at the police department. It's somewhat limited in its abilities, but we make it work, and someday, if we ever build a new police building, maybe we'll even actually build a full-blown emergency operations center, which I think would be a wise thing. And then we also send key staff members to a special training, training program, called California Specialized Training Institute, it's located in San Luis Obispo, and they specialize only in disaster preparedness training. Community preparedness, this is one area, I don't know if we could ever do enough in this area, but I'm happy to say that our number-one program we have for community preparedness is our Community Emergency Response Team Training. This is our CERT program, and it's a program that educates people about disaster preparedness, for hazards that may impact their area, and trains them in basic disaster response skills. And what's really important about this program is, as you have seen in the New Orleans coverage, you know, people think that a disaster's gonna occur, and all of a sudden, people are gonna show up and take care of their problems for them. Well, in the issue of New Orleans, you know, there were 800, approximately 800 New Orleans firefighters that are part of the New Orleans Fire Department, 653 of them lost their homes, as well, and their families were displaced as well. And so when you look at the magnitude, what happens when the responders are not available to respond, you're really on your own. And this program helps people in our community prepare to be on their own, and we recommend they need to be prepared to be self-sufficient, from 72 hours to two weeks out, before they're really gonna get serious assistance or relief, to the lowest possible level. It's a great program, includes a lot of great information, as is listed up there, it's free to the residents. Because of the amount of time, energy, effort, and limited staff, we only offer it twice a year, and we only get 30 people a year. So we've been doing it for a while, but I would say we only have about 210 community members that have had the opportunity to go through it. We go in lulls and booms, as far as people who are interested. You know, about three years ago, we really didn't have a lot of people that were clamoring to get into a CERT class. As you might imagine right now, we have an overwhelming waiting list to get into our CERT programs. We also focus on opportunities to do community preparedness through public education. Our staff, both our disaster preparedness coordinator, Katie Freeman, our public information officer, Jen Schultz, and some of our other fire personnel, do speaking engagements at local community groups. We have, always have, public information about CERT and disaster preparedness at all of our public events that we participate in. We work with the local media when we can, to get good disaster preparedness messages out there. And we look for target populations, where we can go talk to them, such as, we have a great relationship with Hoag Hospital and their disaster preparedness program, because they are a special population that's gonna have special needs, in the event of disaster. We also have partnerships with a lot of other organizations that we work with for disaster preparedness, not only in their organizations, but as they support our response efforts, such as the Red Cross, such as the National Charity League, such as the Newport Mesa School District. I mean, quite frankly, the school district is our best source for shelter, in the event of emergency, because they have a lot of facilities. So we do continue to work with them. That's, in a nutshell, kind of what our disaster preparedness program is about. Now, let's talk about what happens when a disaster strikes, okay? First and foremost, when a disaster strikes, we're either gonna have no warning, or some warning. And if you look at these types of events, these are typical events that could impact Newport Beach. Earthquake, obviously, at the top of the list, tsunamis are possible, but the reason we put local and Pacific-wide is, one of those, a Pacific-wide tsunami, we have great opportunity for advanced warning. You know, if you have a Pacific-wide tsunami that originates off of Hawaii, originates off of Alaska, we actually have some time to initiate some evacuation plans. But if we have a local tsunami that's based from an offshore earthquake fault, or a major land movement offshore, that's off of our local waters and produces a tsunami, there is actually no warning whatsoever. Same thing with earthquakes, we don't know when an earthquake's gonna hit, they've not perfected the science on predicting earthquakes, so we're gonna have no warning. Wildfires, we may have some warning, depending upon the spread of fire, and its impact on our wildfire areas on our borders. Dam failure, we could possibly have some sort of reservoir failure, we could have some warning, where we could do some advanced evacuation and preparation. Hurricanes, I would think we'd have plenty of warning in this end of the woods. Aircraft accident, we would literally have no warning if we had a large commercial airliner go down in our community. And a hazardous materials event, depending upon the type of event, we may have little or no warning. So it's really important to understand that, a real important component of disaster response is community preparedness, because they need to know what to do when a disaster hits, because we may not have the ability to mitigate it until after the disaster has struck. According to the hazard analysis that we had done, that was part of the preparation for the LCP, the general plan, we really took a real strong look at the types of events that occur in Newport Beach, and the probability, and we put them in priority order. As you can see, that the earthquake scenario is our most likely scenario, that hazardous materials event is the most second likely, a large fire explosion that could impact a large area the third, flood or storm, fourth, oil spill fifth. As you go down, you'll see that tsunami is way down on the list, you know, just below war, as far as what the potential impacts in our community. And this is really based upon taking a look at, what is the chance of this occurring in Newport Beach, and then what effect would it have on the community? And when you look at those things together, you'll see that it is ranked according to kind of a measure of the two combined together. Clearly, a tsunami could have a higher effect than an energy shortage, but the likelihood of an energy shortage is much higher than a tsunami, so that's why it's higher on the list. And this is really important for us to look at that, because when we start looking at disaster preparedness scenarios, we start looking at one of the future things we're working on, which is called scenario-based incident action plans, we really need to look at what we think are the most probable, and work on those first, and work on the others later. And so this is kind of an important document for us to keep in our mind, because it gives us focus on our disaster preparedness efforts. Now, that brings us to a little bit of a discussion on the alerting and warning component that we talked about, and I took you through some of the discussions about the types of disasters, and when we may or may not hear about them, so you can put it into perspective about how it affects our ability to do alerting and warning in our community. Clearly, depending upon the nature of the threat, and the population group at risk, warning can originate at any level of government, and we'll talk about that in a minute, too, because it really plays into the whole issue of the tsunami warning thing we talked about that happened on June 14th. And the success in our ability to save lives and property is dependent upon how timely we get this information. You know, the sooner we find out something's happening, the sooner we can start into efforts to mitigate or reduce the disaster, and begin response and recovery efforts. The longer it takes us, the longer it takes us to be able to respond, and the more likelihood that there'll be a continuation of the impacts, until we can put something into action to reduce. And that's even right down to the basic level of, you know, being able to save somebody's life from a heart attack. The sooner we discover that someone's having a heart attack, the sooner 911 can be activated, sooner we can respond with paramedics, the sooner we can get them into the hospital, even into the cath lab. So it's all about, the sooner we find out, the better it is for everybody. And once we find out, we know it's the city's responsibility to provide information to its residents. Now, in this city, the local warning point, in other words, the place where we get information on what's happening in our community, is our police department. And that information comes to the police department in a myriad of ways. Obviously, clearly, the most initial and constant source of information in our communities are 911s. And the first stop for 911s in Newport Beach is the police department. Every 911 call goes to our police department, regardless of type. So if it's a fire or a medical emergency, it goes there first, and then gets transferred to our fire dispatch center. We also have city personnel that may have knowledge of what's happening, and can provide that information to the watch commander. The Orange County Communication System, which is operated by the sheriff, also, we call it Control 1, that's the nerve center for the whole county-wide coordinated communication system, and that really is the fan-out information, for information that comes in from any means into the central core of our county, and then they fan it out. The California Law Enforcement Teletype System is another way for law enforcement people to share information. There's necessarily gonna be the way that it comes from other organizations, but certainly the way law enforcement shares information. The California Warning Center, which is located at the Office of Emergency Services in Rancho Cordova, outside of Sacramento, and then the National Weather Service, are all sources of providing information to our police department. In the majority of the cases, all of these go through Control 1 in the county of Orange. So they're really an important cog for us, because if you think about trying to disseminate information out, or bring it back down, those 58 county warning control points really are the main point of contact for the state of California. So they really have a key role in giving us information on outside sources of information that we need to know for our own responses. Okay? This gives you an idea of the state warning system, and how it may or may not work, and it goes up and down. As an emergency incident occurs, if it's statewide, then the State of California Warning Center is gonna initiate information, it's gonna come down directly to the Orange County Operational Area, right here, Control 1, which we talked about, and that will then go down to our police department, and our fire dispatch center up in Anaheim, and so they can disseminate information directly out to both groups. There's also what's called a regional Los Alamos Armed Forces Reserve Center, this is also called the Regional Response Center, so there's actual federal and state resources that are kept in Los Alamos, and they may also get notification and start getting activated by the state, if they think it's a matter of statewide importance. So there really is the ability going up and down this chain, to share information, provided it's exercised, and there's a discipline that's maintained. Now, as far as what the police department does with this information, the police department is the place that's responsible for providing, first, internal city notifications. So the police department is the one who sends out information when the EOC gets activated. And in this community, the police watch commander, the fire battalion chief, obviously, the police or fire chief, the city manager can call up and say, "We are acting the emergency operations center," and it is the responsibility of the police department to make that happen. They initiate a page to all of the primary contacts, and then they record who calls in to respond to that page. And they have this special EOC activation notification list, we update it every month to make sure it's accurate, and they have who's supposed to be called, whether it's a full activation or a partial activation of the EOC, and they check off who's responded. And after a certain period of time, if they haven't heard from somebody, they'll use alternate means to contact them, telephones, radios, whatever methods is available, to contact city personnel, who are essential to responding to a community, to our EOC. They also have instructed our people who are disaster services workers, which is all the city employees, that if you become knowledgeable of a disaster that has occurred in the city of Newport Beach, your first obligation is to ensure that your family is not impacted, so make sure you take care of your family, and once your family has been situated, you're required to respond- required to respond to Newport Beach, either to your place of work, or if you can't respond to your place of work, to the nearest fire station and report as a city employee disaster services worker. So even if we can't call people, if they know an earthquake hit in Newport Beach or a tsunami hit Newport Beach, they're required and instructed to report to work. So that's our initial notification system for city employees. They're also responsible for alerting the public to the threat of any imminent or extraordinary danger by timely dissemination of information. And this is one of the questions about how do we do that? And it's tough, okay? The watch commander's there 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Fire department's here 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And then they have direct contact with the public information officer and with our disaster preparedness coordinator to ensure that we get support services in immediately to start this warning process. Okay, how do we alert the public? Well, first and foremost, we have what's called the Emergency Alerting System. And what this is, is any city's EOC, any city's police department, fire department, or PIO can contact the Control One County Operational Area and ask them to put out an emergency alert system. And that goes out to all of the media sources. So when you hear the little beep come on your radio or the beep that comes on your TV, that is initiated through contacting Control One, and they make that source out there with what message we want to occur on our media. So we have the ability to do that. We also have the ability to contact our cable television stations and have them put something on our local cable channels. Now, one of the things that we're currently working on right now, that we've continued to work on, is because we have two sources of cable franchise in this community, we would like to have direct access to the cable and put that in, but we're having a hard time getting that through for some reason. So we're still working on being able to have direct head-in capability where we could put our own messages on cable TV and interrupt their broadcast when we want to. Obviously, we have the ability to do vehicle public address systems, which is driving up and down streets with our PA systems and sirens that notifies people, or flying over affected areas with our helicopters to notify people and using our PA system. Depending upon the nature of the event, people can use door-to-door canvassers, which is the utilization of existing city employees or convergent volunteers to notify people. And while this may not be something we would really rely on in an urgent situation, it is something you could rely on when you're talking about, you know, advanced warning or evacuation warnings, such as, if we had an issue where we expected large floods to impact us and we knew that these certain areas were going to be impacted, this might be a method that we would use. We could also use printed flyers and pass them out to homes if time permitted, if we had the ability to do that. Non-English speaking, we actually have employees who have the ability to go out and interact with non-English speaking people, whether, whatever they are, whether they're, you know, French, German, Iraqi, Hispanic. And then, on hearing impaired, that's part of the emergency alerting system. We need to work with the television systems to do that. So there are means and methods available today to provide emergency alerting and warning using traditional means. Now, there's certain areas that we have worked on agreements to provide information for specific areas and target areas. Clearly, we would have hospitals, convalescent homes, assisted living facilities, senior housing, where we've already discussed with them how we would do alerting and warning with them. One of the serious considerations when we get to the discussion about evacuation is looking at evacuation of these types of facilities. It becomes a real difficult task. If you look at what happened in New Orleans, they had tremendous problems with evacuating people who were in these type of facilities, partially because responders couldn't get to them, and that was one of the reasons. Second is, there was no set-up communication system to determine what the needs were and where they were at. So they hadn't identified that target up above, and they hadn't made that a special event. One of the things that we do, for example, in our organization, is in the event of a seismic event, we actually have a system with our fire department where we do what's called a windshield survey. And the initial response for all of our personnel is to survey, pre-identify routes in their areas to look for and report back on major areas of damage or impacted areas. So we can initially get a big-picture look at what's going on in our community before we start responding and responding inappropriately. It'd be a real shame if we rushed off to help one person when we had a convalescent hospital that was jeopardized and losing, you know, 40. So it's really important that we understand what those sites with special requirements are and start looking towards plans to deal with those. Other sites, obviously, mobile home parks, schools, as I said, we maintain a good relationship with our school district on their disaster plans, utility companies, businesses with hazardous materials, glad to say we don't have that many in Newport Beach anymore, and disabled. Evacuation. When we talk about evacuation, clearly what we want to do is get people out of harm's way, okay? The first thing we need to do to be able to do that is control evacuation traffic. So the police department has plans in place on how to utilize certain of our evacuation routes that are pre-designated for one way off, out of an area traffic only, no going the other direction. And one of the things that goes along with that is then providing pre-established alternate routes for emergency responders to get in. So if you were to totally block off Baobab Boulevard for response off of the peninsula, we would have to totally dedicate Bay Avenue for responding personnel only, so we have an alternate means for traffic. One of the things is to coordinate transportation for those without vehicles and those with special needs. We already do have pre-existing agreements with the Orange County Transit Authority and Newport Mesa School District to use their buses, but obviously, that has to do with, you know, timely notification, getting them to be able to dispatch their buses with drivers. So if the event occurs at night, obviously, we've got to recall people back to activate the buses. So there's no immediate solution to some of these answers. Some of them actually are going to take 24 to 72 hours to initiate. And then finally, proper perimeter control for the affected scene and evacuated areas. In other words, let's make sure that we control the area that's impacted, so when we're trying to move people out, we're not exacerbating the problem by getting loke-loos, looters, other people into the area. So control the perimeter to effectively coordinate how we control the people getting and out. Again, when we look at what are the things that may require evacuation? Fire explosion, that was a big issue in our EOC drill we had last month, a fire in Buck Valley impacting homes along and around Buck Valley, Old Corona Del Mar, and so evacuation was an issue. Flood areas, particularly the low-lying areas that we've already pre-identified. Hurricane tsunami also, those are areas that if we have advanced warning, we can affect evacuation. Obviously, a hazardous materials leak, it's important that we get people out of the impact zone. Natural gas leak is another one similar to that, which we actually deal with quite frequently, not necessarily to the extent of something you see on TV, but you never know when a tobacco pulls, tears through a 12-inch natural gas line, how much evacuation you have to deal with. Criminal hostage situation, bomb threat, all potential evacuation, small and/or large. Our procedures are, first and foremost, immediately identify the area and population to be evacuated. We don't have a general evacuation order that says, "Everybody in the community evacuate." And the reason we don't is, we want to make sure that we evacuate the people that are going to be immediately impacted and not create a problem by evacuating everybody to where they can't get out. So we first identify, we then immediately identify the best possible site to have them evacuate to. And what's interesting is, we recognize the need for public sheltering, but typically, only about 10% of people in Southern California actually go to evacuation shelters. Most people go to relatives, friends, out-of-town hotels. Now, that definitely was not the case in New Orleans, but New Orleans is a predominantly low-income, low-social strata population. They didn't have anywhere to go nor means to get there. So a big difference in the type of populations that we'd be dealing with versus they dealt with in New Orleans. Contact the Red Cross to assist us in setting up the shelters. Establish what the evacuation routes are and make sure people know who they are. Get additional personnel to help. For example, in our disaster drill, when we decided we had to do evacuation, we had immediately requested the county for 100 police officers from outside of Newport Beach, and that would be not an unusual request. Explain to people why they're being evacuated. There's a whole issue as far as declaring whether mandatory evacuation is going to be required or whether we even want it to be. In some cases, we may discover that in certain of the population we want them evacuate, in other of the population, we want them to shelter right where they're at, that they're safer staying where they're at. And we won't know until we know what the scenario is, what the impacted area is, and what our evacuation needs are going to be. Again, we request transportation assistance from the EOC or Control One, which is through the Orange County Transit Authority buses, Newport Mesa schools, and again, controlled access to the area. So this is the checklist that we use in the EOC and the police department to determine how we evacuate an affected area. We have already predetermined certain routes, is what we call evacuation routes, so we can actually say, "There they are." And if you look at them, they're the low areas to the high areas, you know, get us out of town. And not all of them will be evacuation routes on every single event, depends upon the nature of the event. Again, we have special population considerations with evacuation. You know, schools, if we have to move kids out of an impact area, that's a high priority and certainly a challenging one. People with disabilities, particularly in assisted living facilities or nursing care facilities, senior centers, the non-speaking or low-income families, transients, transient populations who aren't part of our community, who are just here visiting and really don't have anywhere else to go. So there's a lot of things to think about when you're looking at how to make sure that we make a safe area. Now, let's talk a little bit about what happened on June 14th. There actually occurred an earthquake. It was a 7.2 on the Richter scale on the Gorda Plate. This occurred offshore about 90 miles off the coast of Crescent City, which is far up in Northern California. A standard tsunami warning was issued to the California coast due to the magnitude of the earthquake, and we're going to talk in just a minute about tsunami watches and tsunami warnings and why they get initiated and what they mean. This turned out to be a non-event, and the media got a hold of it and became a media-driven event. In fact, what's very interesting, if you think about the media-driven event, I don't know how many of you had the opportunity to watch the news coverage of that commuter aircraft that landed at LAX with its airline, front airline wheels sideways?
JetBlue.
But it was a JetBlue aircraft, and JetBlue prides themselves on saying that you have direct TV access 100% of the time, and they literally watched themselves being covered on TV and watched themselves land on TV. So this now shows you how out far-reaching the media is in disaster events and response events. So you can never underestimate the power of the media, both how they can impact what's going on or how you can use them to affect your disaster response, okay? In the state of Califor-- actually, in the NOAA, where NOAA stands for National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration, which is the governing agency that deals with weather issues, and they are the people who run the Pacific Regional Warning Center for tsunamis. Anyway, they're the ones that kind of coordinate and develop these rules. And what they do is, they really have two different things. One's called a watch and one's called a warning. And a tsunami watch is automatically declared by the warning center for any earthquakes that have a magnitude of 7.5 or larger on the Richter scale. Well, as you know, that this was 7.2, so this was not, did not meet the definition of a tsunami watch. The watch will either be upgraded to a warning and subsequent bulletins or canceled, depending upon the severity of the tsunami. So a watch was not, did not, this did not fall under the definition of a tsunami watch. However, tsunami warning was issued when a potentially tsunami-producing earthquake over the threshold magnitude, which is 7.0, in the Pacific Ocean occurs. And that's exactly what happened. We had a 7.2 earthquake in the Pacific Ocean that could be potentially, the word potentially, tsunami-producing, and so a warning was issued, okay? The warning was issued, usually, the warnings are issued within 10 minutes after the occurrence, and it's just that. It's a warning that said, "A potentially tsunami-producing earthquake occurred in the Pacific coast, and so therefore, we're issuing this warning." At no time did they say, "A tsunami has been produced and a tsunami is on your way." So it's important to understand that. And quite frankly, we had an education as well, because we didn't really understand how to differentiate as much as we should have, the difference between a watch, a warning, and what a warning would tell us. So quite frankly, had we had more information about this, we probably wouldn't have canceled your council meeting, okay? But we didn't know, so we did what we thought was prudent. This is what we did. When we heard that we had a tsunami warning, the police received it through the California Law Enforcement Teletype System, so it did not come down through the state warning system. It came through the California Law Enforcement Warning System. They let us know, the fire department, the harbor patrol know, they let the coast guard know, they monitored the situation, and they started planning for evacuation of low-lying areas, which principally is the peninsula and along the inner harbor, particularly Babo Island. When the fire department heard about it, we contacted the watch commander, we notified all of our stations, we let the council know, and we called our emergency services coordinator and let her know. Lifeguards went up and down clearing the beaches. This was pretty late at night, so there wasn't a lot of people there. We answered residents' concern that came out of their houses and wanted to know what the heck we were doing, going up and down the beaches, making everybody get up, and we talked to our own staff as well. Based upon the information, the police and fire made the decision to come in and say, "We think you should cancel your meeting." So that's what we did. Was it a stellar response? I can't say it was, but I think it was a safe one. And with that being said, that's probably a good thing. So where do we go from here on alerting and warning? First, I think we obviously agree, there's no doubt that we can continue to learn and practice and improve upon our disaster preparedness in Newport Beach, and this was another opportunity for us to learn some lessons. Just so you know, one of the things that we are working on right now is a program called MIR3. And what this is, this is a countywide effort to develop, to purchase a software system that allows for police agencies to do computer-generated notifications out to all their first responders. So we could have the capability pretty soon, we think maybe inside of a year, where the police department could do computer-generated telephone notification by priority listing of essential city response personnel to respond to an earthquake or whatever. They could do that as opposed to just relying on a pager system, for example. One of the things that is a potential option is to expand this to what's called resident notification, or what they call a reverse 911. And generally, what it does is, there's a 911 computer, you know, computer in the sky, that has a listing of every telephone number and their addresses. And so when somebody calls us from 911 from a landline phone, not a voice-over internet protocol phone or not a cell phone, it matches up with their address. Well, we can use this in reverse to call people using this computer and give them a message. Well, this would be a great opportunity to do advanced, advanced, advanced notifications, but you can only do about 600 an hour using the software and the phone line capability. So this wouldn't be a good system for doing a widespread alert, but it might be a good system for a focused alert. So it's something we're going to take a look at as a means of notifying citizens in Newport Beach on issues of important concern. We are following the tsunami warning. There was a lot of interest along the coastal cities of, "Well, what would we do if a tsunami hit?" And so there actually is a countywide committee of emergency management personnel working on developing a countywide tsunami plan to look at how we would kind of all respond and react to tsunami warnings and watches and tsunami threats on a countywide basis, which I think is a good thing because we cooperate and work so much with all of our neighbors on so many other things. This is one I think we should look at as well. And then finally, there's also the potential for us to look at what we call being a tsunami-ready community. And a tsunami-ready community is, there's, I can't remember who's the governing agency?
National Weather.
National Weather Service has guidelines on how to make sure your community is educated, prepared, and ready to respond in the event a tsunami occurs. And we're taking a look at that and seeing if that's something that we want to do. As I mentioned earlier, we have a tremendous amount of things that we want to get done, and tsunami's pretty low on the priority list right now. One of the potential, other key issues we can look at, you know, one of the things we talked about was, what about a warning siren system? And immediately, that crops up. That's definitely a possibility. There are warning systems that go anywhere from about $300,000 to a basic system to about $1 million. about $1 million for the really exotic system. You know, a basic warning system provides sirens that can be operated remotely, and they just go off, and when you hear a siren, you better hope the public has been educated on what to do, because it really doesn't do anything more than that. Versus some systems that actually are omnidirectional speakers, that have voice chips in them, where you could actually send messages out over them that says, you know, evacuate to, you know, this place, or, you know, turn on your television to Channel 3, or turn, tune your radio to, you know, 93.7, or whatever. It actually gives alerting and warning systems. You know, do we want to put in just a few? Do we want to only do the coastal regions that are tsunami-prone? Do we want to do it citywide? You know, a lot of policy issues about, would we want to do a warning siren system? And if so, how would we administer a system like that? There are some funds available, I think, available through a grant program that we might be able to access to do something like this. But that's a pretty major step, because once you decide to commit to doing a warning siren system, you better have a lot of resources behind it to totally educate the public on what to do when the siren goes off, which I think is a key component. Expanding our public education program, I think we could do a lot more in public education just to disaster preparedness. I don't know if we could expand our CERT program, but it would require us to take a look at, you know, what our other priorities are, or add staff, but it's a, that's a big issue. If we were to really want to work harder on community preparedness and community education, we'd probably have to look at how we might look at additional staff, or really retool our whole public education program, because there's a lot more we could do, but, you know, the sky's the limit on something like that. Finally, a volunteer program. We don't have a volunteer program in Newport Beach. We do have the CERT program where we train people, but we don't maintain them as Newport volunteers, we don't have a volunteer coordinator. One of the things that was really interesting in the New Orleans area and the Gulfport area is, they were inundated with people just showing up there because they wanted to help. And they had no system set up in place to deal with convergent volunteers, just showing up and wanting to help. And we really don't have a convergent volunteer system set up either. So should something like that happen, you know, one of the things we're doing is training our CERT people to kind of be block captains and work with their own areas. But if we had a bunch of people show up from outside this community, it would be quite a major task to organize convergent volunteers and use them effectively. So we don't have an existing one. I wrote Citizen Corps, there's actually a federal program called Citizen Corps, which is a, you know, encourage volunteerism in your community, forward responses to disasters and other public safety issues. We haven't done that yet, and quite frankly, we haven't done it because we just don't have the staff to be managing a bunch of volunteers right now. So those are the issues I think that we can take a look at in disaster preparedness from here on out. That pretty much concludes my presentation today for the council members. I mean, we could talk about this a lot, there's just a lot to talk about.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Tim, when, during the evacuation or prior to the evacuation, what authority does a fire official or a police official have in either demanding or requesting evacuation?
Well, the fire official doesn't have it, the police department does have it. The police department does have the authority to forcibly remove someone from a hazardous situation, even if it's in their own home.
Okay, but the fire does not?
No, we do not. But we would be utilizing them to assist them in that regard.
Well, I mean, the concern is both West Newport and Balboa, as you know. The peninsula, and I know during that June 24th event, the police were down with basically bullhorns in their cars. And let me say, there was no traffic control on Balboa Boulevard, just observation.
Let me weigh in, Chief. This I view as a primary business of the city, safety. I think a clearing absence here tonight, where's the police department? We don't have the police chief here. Talking about a primary obligation of the city, and you're here, and you're saying it's a tandem effort. Mr. Ridgeway just talked about a tandem effort. I'm not so critical, but I view this as a primary obligation. And when something happens, I just came from Senator Feinstein, she was, she didn't pick the, I didn't pick the topic, she talked about this topic for 15 minutes with all the mayors of Orange County. You're on your own for 72 hours, don't expect any help. You better be prepared. When I was mayor of San Francisco, we did a yearly drill on earthquake preparedness, 42 departments, it took a huge expenditure of time. I mean, all, even as to how they get heavy equipment in to pick up things, and alerts, and all this and that, and that was her topic today. So I, you know, and here we are with a low-lying area, and I know you can rate these disasters, but I think that's the primary business of the city, and I don't think it's mayor, I want a mic stuck in my face saying, what went wrong? So I guess my question is, is this, I mean, where does this sit? What's your budget? How many personnel do you have to allocate to this? Do you think you need more? Or do you think you're doing enough?
Well, first and foremost, let me say that disaster preparedness for the city of Newport Beach is a responsibility in the fire department. And that's the way it's been set up in, in this city, the way it's staffed out through our organization. So part of the reason the police department's here is that, quite frankly, for this discussion, they weren't really invited, nor really, I don't think they were necessary at this time. They are active partners in disaster preparedness, particularly in the EOC operation, because it's their business and they're building their
Well, that's right. That's where we were with the EOC.
They are, absolutely. So from the perspective of, are we doing enough? We're doing a whole lot more than we ever used to do, and I think that principally, it's become a very high priority in our staff organization citywide, because Homer makes that. It was something we felt we had to do before, now it's something that we're really kept to a high standard to do.
Well, let me ask you in a simple way. It's now October 14th, same event happens, what would you do differently?
What would we do differently on this?
You've got the same, you've got the same screen, you've got the same problem, you've got, what?
Well, if we're talking about the June 14th event of tsunami warning?
Exactly, it happens again.
We would have qualified our information before we decided to put anything into place.
Well, let's assume it does trigger, and you get the, and you get the warning. What are you going to do differently today than you were going to do four months ago?
We, we would do pretty much what we, what I put up there as far as the alerting and warning systems and the evacuation plan. That's the responsibility of the police department, they'd be the ones that are responsible for doing that.
Well, that's the reason I wanted them here. The point is, is I understand there was a little trouble on the peninsula trying to get off of it. My question is, four months later, same thing happens, what have we done differently to prepare for this? Probably not a question for you, but the fact is that, I'm just trying to see what progress we have, because we do have an exposed area. We have a peculiar geographic feature here that would make it difficult.
Mayor, if we have an emergency and need to evacuate the peninsula, there's going to be a traffic problem.
Well, I understand that, but the point is
There's going to be bumper to bumper, and it's going to be slow out there.
Well, I understand that, but the fact is, this is disaster preparedness, this is what the point of discussion is. If it happened again, how do we do it differently? And that's what I'm saying. If you don't think it's ever going to happen, or if you think that air is somehow going to be uplifted by 20 feet, then it's probably not a problem. I'm just saying, we're in the business of safety, we've got a peculiar peninsula situation that could be at risk, what are we going to do differently? And, or do we do nothing? And just admit we're going to do nothing? I guess that that's the hard question.
Well, I would, I would first say, I don't think that we're going to admit to do nothing, nor are we going to do nothing. I would also suggest that we probably need to do some work on our evacuation plan. It's something we haven't put a lot of energy into. I mean, clearly, we talk about our disaster program, it's one of many things that we have obligations to work on, so
Oh, no, no, and I'm not, I'm not putting a blame here, but it's a question for us, the policymakers, to, to look at this issue, decide whether it's a priority. And it's a priority to me, but I'm one of, I'm one of seven, and I'm not going to, I can't set policy. And so you're probably responding to the priority that we have given you, and that's not a criticism of you at all.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I, I think what Senator Feinstein told yourself and the other mayors, I read about recently, an article that a citizen sent me, and clearly in New Orleans, one of the major problems was restoring and maintaining security. So I'd like to see another study session with our police department to talk about how we would do that. And furthermore, when I was listening to your presentation on the subject of public alerts, it seemed as if we talked about vehicle notifications. I mean, what kind of resources and what kind of territory do you have to cover to notify the community?
Well, it depends, when we talk about community notification, we need to put it into perspective of the degree and the resources available. If we have potential tsunami alert, clearly, we're going to be focusing all our efforts on the peninsula and areas right along the bay. So we're going to be moving all of our resources down there for notification. If we have a wildfire, we're going to be focusing our efforts on those areas that are impacted in the wildfire region. We're not going to be going around driving with bullhorns if we have an earthquake. And so it really is a focused problem. Recognize that there's no way we are going to have the resources available, trained and ready, to do total notification of any incident, or total evacuation of any incident citywide. It's not realistic. So it's really, you know, and I hate to keep saying this, but we really have to identify what the problem is before I can tell you this is going to be the response, because we can't afford to respond and be prepared to respond to everything.
But I heard what you said, is in that in many of these emergencies, people are on their own?
Yes.
For days, and days, and days. And it seems as if your CERT program is an educational program to help train people to learn how to be on their own and cope with these situations, and yet there's a long waiting list. So what is the limiting factor, and what can we do as the council to get more of the community trained?
Well, right now, we share the CERT program between two different people, and we also use people on the floor to fill in as instructors. One of the things I think, and we haven't really fleshed this out, but one of the things I think we could really take a look at, is take the whole community preparedness training and education for disaster effort, and make it almost its own complete program. Because principally, Katie Freeman here is our emergency preparedness coordinator. Her focus is the whole citywide preparedness program. And one of the things, for example, is going to be high on her priority list is, we have to rewrite our emergency plan to meet federal requirements for complying with NIMS, the new national incident management system, and we have to do it and train all of our personnel to be certain level of certified training to qualify for disaster funds. Okay? We also have to look at developing what we call a hazard mitigation plan, which is to take a look at our hazard analysis, and start doing things with capital dollars to mitigate the potential impacts of that. You know, do better seawalls, redo evacuation signage, whatever, and, and you got to do that before you can get access to certain funds to help you do that. So there, so Katie is really is principally responsible, she also runs the Emergency Preparedness Committee, she does all the EOC update and maintenance, she works with the, the departments to develop their disaster programs. So she's really focusing on the preparedness program. Then we got a public information person who does that, plus all the rest of our public information. So we kind of stole a little bit from both of them to do CERT. We might want to take a look at doing a community preparedness educator or something, whose sole purpose is just to go out and do education programs.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Tim, I want to say it's easy to be critical up here, and I'm not going to do that. I want to applaud you for the monumental effort you have done to put together a program. And what I think, I know it's not since June, but in a relatively short period of time. I mean, I think the last year, there's been a lot of work going into emergency preparedness, we have a long way to go. Everybody in this country learned something from the hurricane situation, we learned something from June 14th. I guess the message I want to leave to the people out there is, we're working hard on it, you're working hard on it. I think you've made an excellent presentation. It seems to me, it's a highly regulated field. When I listen to all the acronyms and all the different organizations that are involved, it's rather remarkable. But at the end of the day, I'm sure there's room for improvement. I'm not going to sit up here and try to be that person that gives you that room for improvement. You guys are out on the front line every day, so I would love to hear the other part of the team, the police department, but I'm sure they're, they're well-prepared too. I just want you to leave here knowing that you're appreciated for everything you've done. I think it's a very constructive presentation, and, you know, it's easy for us to take potshots up here, not going to do that.
Well, I appreciate that, Casper and Ridgeway. And there is one other thing I'd like to tell you that, that I've made a priority for our organization, now, whether or not we're going to have the resources to do it, but, you know, in going through
Let me make a comment, we will have the resources if it's, if you're talking about dollars.
So, well, I think it has to do with focus.
Okay.
You know, and that's one of the things that I, one of the things I recognized out of the tsunami issue, one of the things I recognized out of the EOC drill, is I'm a firm believer that, you know, predictable is preventable. I think we can really take a look at our community and say, what if an earthquake hit? Or what if a tsunami hit? Or what if, you know, a fire broke out? What would we do? And I, and I think it's possible for us to put together what I call instant action plans in advance. Let's actually go now hazard-specific. We've done a good job training to the all-hazards environment, now let's start picking off earthquake, the first one at the top of the list, and then fires and floods, which is the next one at the top of the list. You know, let's start picking those off and developing action plans of how we would respond to those individual incidents. I think we're, we're at the point in the, in the maturation of our emergency preparedness program, that people will come to the table and start working on that type of thing. And I think that's where our next step is, really, on preparedness in this community, is now let's start getting down to the nitty-gritty.
Well, and the reason I brought this point up to compare it, is like when you came to us and said, your building is crystal cold, we can't respond, I need a fire station, that's simple. You come to us, you have already too much to do, and I'm just hearing, I use that as an example, for you to tell us, I'm telling you it's a big priority. You, if you need more resource, if you need more personnel, if you need money, this is the primary business of the city. Yeah, you could say, yeah, I can, I can, I can dry three more minutes down to crystal cold, but that's, you wouldn't. You'd say, no, that's outside the response range. And I'm, and when I use it as an example, I'm saying, this is outside the response range. If you need resources, I'd like you to come back with some specific things, and some specific budget items, and policy issues for us.
Well, what I'd like to do then, based upon that, is just sit down with the city manager and talk about, you know, the priorities of our programs, where we think we need to focus, and if we're going to talk about more resources, let's make sure that we're on the same page as priorities are concerned, as far as whether we need it in education or preparedness, or, you know, water resources, or, I mean, there's not an unlimited supply, so let's really make sure that we've made a good decision on where we're going to be focusing our resources.
No, that's, that's the whole point. And that was, that was the point of bringing you in, going through the drill, and I applaud you for it, it's very detailed, and I think we went through a lot, not to alarm the city, but to just say, there are exposed areas. We know there's a fault running down the peninsula, and so this, this is not a mystery here. And this is the primary, this is the business why we're in business. And we spend a lot of, with $190 million a year budget, we spend a lot of money, and I want to give you the tools, what you need, when you tell us you need it.
And you know, Mr. Mayor, I will say that, for the longest time, this was the business of the fire department. And I got to say that over the last 10 years, we have changed it to be the business of the city. There's a lot more interest citywide in working on these issues and doing a good job. So we've made a lot of progress. We've got a long way to go, but I'm pretty, that last drill we had, I was very pleased with how everybody acted in that EOC, compared to where we've been. And we've got a ways to go, but I'm pretty proud of what we've done too.
And Tim, you made a point to me that I think is easy even for me to forget. I think probably three, four years ago, as far as our top 10 priorities, when we first developed staff priorities, for two years in a row, we had disaster preparedness in the top 10 priorities. And we haven't had it since, because it's almost become something that is ingrained now in our organization, that we are putting some resources in. I think if we would have had the same conversation last year at budget time, we wouldn't have had, you know, the same amount of interest. It's, it's because of the experiences that the country has experienced as far as the disasters, that raises it to a higher level, and that's good. We will come back to you with how we could employ some more resources and do a better job.
Well, I appreciate, the chief has alerted us that the CERT program is full, and that you need some more resources, and there's some things that we can do to support that effort.
Anybody else in the council here? Okay, thank you, chief.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Katie, thank you.
Yeah, especially Katie.
Yes. Public comment? Thank you.
Hi, good afternoon, my name is Dolores Scotting, I live in Newport Beach. And what I have before you is an article that came out October 4th in The Register, and it talks about Huntington Beach-rated storm-ready. First, I want to apply, applaud the fire chief, he did an excellent job today, and he also did an excellent job right after 9/11 at the Speak Up Newport meeting, and that was when I found out for the first time that if we have a disaster, you're really on your own for 72 hours in your home, and you're really not supposed to be going out into the streets, because they have to go out and find out where the problem is, and how to assist those people, as he explained to you, that are basically in harm's way, more so than others. Okay, so what this is about is Huntington Beach-rated storm-ready. If there's a storm coming this way, Huntington Beach is the place to be. The city on Monday was officially recognized as being storm-ready, the only city in Orange County to receive that distinction from the National Weather Service, which is something our fire chief spoke about a little while ago. It goes on to talk about many potential applications were derailed after September 11th, 2001, when terrorism became a greater concern, but after recent disasters such as Hurricane Katrina and Rita, and last year's tsunami, weather concerns are again taking priorities at Ed Clark. He's the warning coordination meteorologist. In a separate effort, Huntington Beach is in the process of hand-delivering 77,000 emergency preparedness kits to every household in the city. I'm not saying that we need to deliver 77,000 emergency preparedness kits, but we need to do something to the residents to make them feel that something is happening here within Newport Beach. It also goes on to say that Newport Beach and the county are going through the application process to receive storm-ready certification, Clark said. And up under those storm-ready requirements, one of the requirements is to promote the importance of public readiness through community seminars. And I think that's a place to start, so people will feel that something is going on here. You have it in, you have this at an afternoon study session today, okay? How many times is the afternoon study session replayed? It's not replayed with every council meeting, so I know we have video streaming, but that's a two-by-three-inch screen on a computer, okay? How many helicopters do we have in the city? I knew you'd, I knew I'd get a response out of you, Councilmember Ridgeway, with that comment.
I have a 17-inch screen, thank you.
Oh, yeah, but even on your 17-inch computer screen, there's only two-by-three inches. It's part of the function of the media program that's used, okay? So you can't get it any bigger.
There's a button to expand it.
I called the city clerk's office, so explain it to them, and they'll explain it to us. Okay, do we have a tape from the information officer that goes out to all the television stations and all the radio stations that talks about what the evacuation route is? Because right now, myself and only one other public person are here that know which routes, all right? So I think more than two of us need to know this. I'm sure the CERT people know. So again, I really think that we have a long way to go on making people feel that they're safe. Southern California Gas, now you can go onto their website, and they'll help you to figure out how to turn off your gas. Those are the types of things that we need to know a little bit more about. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Dolores. Your chance.
Maybe we could have a local radio station, you know?
Well, we do have one, of course. We have a branch.
Okay, well, close public comment, and we'll adjourn to, oh, public comment on general.
Yeah, one thing my neighbors are...
Sure, come on up.
My neighbors have been asking me what you're going to do about the leaking street on Spiglasse Hill Road. I've called the city up, and I know Councilmember Nichols came down to see it, but it was supposed to dry up this summer. In the 16 years that I've lived there, it just doesn't dry up anymore, and there was some money spent to determine whether or not Harbor Ridge was having some leaks or something, but it's leaking all the time, 24 hours a day, seven days a week. The rainy season hasn't started, and so my neighbors asked, that since I come to the council meetings, they wanted me to ask what we could do about that, and if there was something else that we could do, okay? That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
We should be able to get some federal assistance if we have a leaking street. I don't think anybody else has one.
What's the name of the street? Oh.
There does seem to be possible water pipe leak, though. Not a, I'm talking about, for...
It's probably coming from hillside underneath.
Yeah, it's probably coming that way, but it's probably coming from somebody watering, you know, like we watered a street. I mean, we've seen that. And basically, we even saw that in, I just refer to a little thing in Iris. We had a nice green spot going down the street, and one of our neighbors slipped on it, and I called the storm people. They came out. They did a wonderful job, incidentally, and so with a little bit of help, we managed to turn on and off some water pipes and hoses and things like that, and actually found where the leak was, isolated it, talked to the individual who owned the building, because now we had isolated it to not only his building, but to what part of the system it was, and